I think that's everybody. All right. Good evening. We have a quorum, so I think we're ready to start the meeting. Would everyone please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we have our regular business meeting, we will be having our first presentation of the budget. So I will turn the meeting over, I guess, to Dr. Kami to begin with.
Yes, thank you. All right, I'm going to share my screen. Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll start by saying that this has been an interesting budget preparation season. Dr. Robinson, you're there, right?
Yes, I am.
The, I think that, you know, it's always a reminder that the purpose of our school budget, and we are very clear about this, is our instructional program and our students. And everything that we need to do to support that is really what this budget is all about. What is different this year and important to know, so, you know, this is this iceberg metaphor. So, you know, above the surface, what you see of an iceberg is, is what is made obvious to you, but the real financial impact of what we are addressing in this budget season is really what's below the waterline. It's what you don't see. So we're going to spend some time today really talking about what's below the, what's underneath the surface. Because really what we are, issues that, that we're really grappling with are the issues of sustainability and multi-year planning. I think you all know that the business offices is exceptionally well-run. And in many respects, one of the reasons why I can say that with confidence is that the multi-year planning has been beyond exceptional. It has gotten us through, you know, some uncertain times. It has allowed us to build our program and bring a lot of things back that had once been cut. And so we're going to spend some time really looking at what's, what's below the surface. So at this point in time, on February 3rd, we have what we know is in our budget. We know what our expenses are for next year in order to be able to sustain the programs that we currently have in place. So our budget expenses are known to us. The cost drivers to maintain our academics is known to us. But what we do not know, and where the system is, is in flux right now, and what does not equal is the revenue, right? So there's, there's multiple sources of revenue. The tax levy is one source. The way that we use our reserves is another source. Appropriations of fund balance is a third source. Pilots and state aid. And the big, big, big uncertainty going into this school year is, is state aid. So let's talk about what's under the surface. And let's talk about truth, okay? When we look at the big picture concerns, here's some statewide information that's out there. You've seen at least one of these on the front cover of Newsday. You saw a big story that said that there was going to be a 7% increase in total funding for schools. Everybody was thrilled about it and, and, you know, excited that the state was coming and supporting school systems. Let's just say that that's above the surface. And so it's our job to go below the surface and share with you what is in fact the reality of the governor's budget. There is a $600 million reduction in state funding. Well, so in general, it's, it's this supposed 7% increase. It is the use of STAR funding. It is this $1.35 billion, they call it local district funding adjustment. Foundation aid, which is, you know, the underlying component of state aid. And then services aid, which is is a source of income after expenditures the following year. So this 2.2, $2.12 billion quote increase in funding, there's a $600 million reduction in state funding. We don't know that if this is permanent or if this is a one-year, the state is in trouble because of where we find ourselves with COVID-19. There is a $2.72 billion increase in federal support. And we don't know if this is a one-year only. And if it is a one-year only that the federal government comes and plugs in a hole in the state's budget, what happens after year one? And so, you know, the, the real question is, you know, what does this mean for sustainability? When we look at state funding, including STAR, the governor has put STAR, the STAR reimbursements just miraculously showed up as part of school aid. This is irrelevant to school aid, and all it's going to do is cause confusion in our communities. And so don't let this diversionary tactic make you believe that there is additional funding coming to schools as a result of STAR. You all know if you, back in the, you know, the 80s, if you were, you know, in, 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 you know, coming out of Penn Station and you saw the shell game going on out there. This is a shell game. So there is $1.35 billion in this category called local district funding adjustment. If you go back to the 2008 school year-ish, it was called the GEA, the Gap Elimination Act. This is the new GEA. The question here is when the federal government gives the state money and the state gives you sort of a one-time fix on that, if this does not repeat itself year in, you know, every year after that, not only do you lose the original funding that you should have gotten, but you lose it and then some every year after that. And so this title that they've given, local district funding adjustment, is, the question is, is this the new GEA? Foundation aid is frozen for a second, is frozen. So the question about whether or not it's frozen for a second straight year becomes an issue for school districts, especially school districts like ours. And that is the largest part of our state aid funding. So you all know that costs have not remained flat. This year especially, costs were significant. And so if costs are significant and state aid stays flat, you now have a gap between your expenditures and your revenue. The other thing that was done in this statewide budget is that 11 aids, expense-driven aids, were consolidated into something called services aid. We count on expense-driven aid as revenue for every additional following year. So if we're seeing these aids consolidated, we lose the ability to plan forward. I'll give you an example. So if we purchase technology through a BOSI's Coser, and we know as a result of that, we get in the neighborhood of 50% aid back on that, we know that that money is a revenue in a future year. But when these are consolidated, it makes it, and, and this is something the governor has tried for multiple years. But once it's consolidated, we have no ability to predict whether or not we're going to receive revenue from those expenses in future years. So while at the outset, it seems like, you know, this, this, the, this is, you know, initially great news. When you get under the surface of the iceberg, what you find is that there are, A, many more questions than there are answers. And you find a lot of uncertainty. There's other shifts from New York State to, to local districts. One is residential special education placements. So for example, if we have a student who is in need of residential placement, the cost of room and board has been the responsibility of the state to reimburse school districts. This new budget from the governor shifts the entire responsibility from the state to the local district. So where the state would pay the cost of the room and board for these young people in a place like that, that requires a residential placement, the cost of that is now going to be paid by school districts. This is something that is completely unpredictable. There is no way to plan for something like that. The other is the STAR program. In the governor's budget, he eliminates enhanced STAR exemptions for new recipients. And he also shifts STAR as a purported income for school districts when, in fact, it's not. And the last shift from New York State to local school districts is in the area of charter schools. So in addition to what school districts pay, the tuition that school districts pay for students to attend charter schools, in the past, the state would supplement that by $1,000 per student. This budget eliminates that and reduces it, the state's share to $500 per student and shifts the extra $500 per student to the school district. We currently pay, give or take, a half a million dollars in cost and tuition costs, just tuition, to charter schools. And so this would be now an added burden to the local school community in the cost of charter schools. So based on the governor's current executive budget, 41%, remember that headline in Newsday, right? School districts see a 7% increase in aid for, in, in this current governor's budget. The fact is that 41% of Long Island school districts will actually see a drop in school aid. And unfortunately for Baldwin, we are one of those school districts. This graphic that was put together by the New York State Council of School Superintendents really, I think, depicts this inequity of funding in the most graphic and obvious way possible. So you see at the top, the total state funding, the stimulus aid is in purple. The local funding adjustment is in yellow, and services aid is in gray. If you look at Long Island, which is the area that's boxed off in red, look at the difference between the aid that Long Island is getting compared to what's right underneath it, which is New York City. So New, Long Island is getting a stimulus aid of about $759 dollars per student, where New York City is getting almost $2,100 per student. And so if you say, well, you know, comparing it to New York City is not a fair comparison, well, let's compare it to Lower Hudson. Lower Hudson is the, the line right under New York City to underneath Long Island. And they're at $1,029 per student as compared to our $759 per student. So I think one question to really be asking our local legislators is why is Long Island, which is of the, of some of the highest taxed communities in the state, why is Long Island of the lowest funding per pupil in all of New York State? So again, foundation aid remains flat. This is the second year in a row it's remained flat. This, they're, this funding source that they're calling a pandemic adjustment is really just a local district funding adjustment. And there are multi-year concerns as New York State is really taking money off of the top of the federal government's money, the money that's going to New York State and backfilling New York State's deficits. That money is not filtering to schools. So in a normal year, we do a three-part budget. And we do administrative and capital in the first series, and then we do program. But because of where we are, we're going to really be presenting the entire budget because Dr. Robinson and I felt it important for you to see the overall impact of where we are today. The individual budget codes become less relevant. And right now, until we know very specifically what the aid is going to be, we really, we have built a budget based on keeping it flat. But until we know what our state aid is going to be, it's impossible to know what the ultimate outcome is going to be in terms of the budget. So presented to you here is that we are looking into the 2122 school year with a total budget of $142,453,425. Of that, $99 million is tax levy. Approximately $42,500 approximately is other income, which includes state aid. This represents a total budget-to-budget increase of 2.93%. In there, you can see administrative increase is about 1.5%. Program increase is under 3%. And capital increase is a 5.33%. And, and you might ask, well, you know, what makes this up? Well, that capital cost is almost exclusively related to COVID-related expenses. And so the, that 5.33 hopefully is an anomaly, you know, for now, but it is cost-related to that. So that is additional cleaners. It's additional cost of sanitizer and materials. And in there as well is the cost of heating our buildings with windows cracked open because we're trying to keep airflow. But in order to really finalize this, we really need to have a finalized governor's budget so that we know ultimately what that, that area of other income is going to be. So when you look at an analysis-
Sorry, do you prefer that we reserve our questions to the end?
I think that would be helpful because you might get your question answered later. But we'll spend as much time answering whatever questions. And remember, this is only the first presentation of the budget as is. And there's a lot of things that can change between now and whatever the final version is. So under admin, you can see that according to these function codes, there's increase of point, a half a percent, 0.51%. That includes everything in district office. So that's every office in district office. What you don't see, well, you do, is there's a lot of negatives. So there's a lot of cuts to some of those budgets. There's also some increases. And included in one of those increases, just as an FYI, is the move to the bold system for our voting. So there is an increased cost to that. We have added some financial forecasting software that's in there called Forecast 5, so that there's an extra add in there. There's some increases in data, data, data bandwidth, for example. With the addition of all of that technology and a real reliance on the use of technology, we had to increase our bandwidth from 700 megs to 1 gig. So that is, that's, that was a significant increase in this, in this portion of the budget. When you look at the analysis in the next set of budget codes, what you'll see is not exactly as it appears. So where you see, for example, an increase of programs for English language learners, if you remember going back a few years now, we had to do some work on changes of codes by building. And so part of this is related to, to that. You also will see an increase in the computer-assisted instruction. That is directly related to all of the software that was purchased in order to go remote and be able to teach in that manner. There is an increase in program for students with disabilities. That is something that is unpredictable every year. There are some years where youngsters, families move into our community with high-need special education services. And, you know, by law, we have to provide that. And sometimes that, those are unbudgeted expenses. Under facilities, again, this is, we talked about the increase of $504,000, which is all related. They're almost exclusively COVID-related expenses. Under the next set of function codes, there, these are all things that are well beyond our control. So for example, you will see a, an increase in hospital, medical, and dental insurance of over a million dollars. One of the things that we have to do in this budget code is because school districts run from July 1st to June 30th, the rest of the world, you know, does not work that way. And so we know what our expenses will be for this budget code from July 1st to December 31st, but we have to have an anticipated cost from January 1st to June 30th. And so we anticipate an increase there, an increase in costs to the state retirement system, the teacher's retirement system, and social security. So you see there that increase, which totals almost 6%. In the next slide, you'll see what probably jumps out at everybody is that state aid, transportation, sorry, state aid, a loss of $2.1 million last year. So the way that transportation works in school districts is you provide transportation and there is an aid formula, formula that reimburses the school district a certain percentage of the cost of transportation. So in March of last year, our buildings were closed by the governor. We stopped busing students. And therefore, we did not, because of the contract that we had, we did not pay transportation costs from April, May, and June. You all know that Baumann, Bus Company, went out of business. You all know that Baumann is suing all of the districts for unpaid contracts. The reason our contract was unpaid was based on the recommendations of our attorneys and our specific contract, which had provisions in it that our attorneys believe very strongly, we did not, nor could we continue to pay for that contract. But in addition to that, it means that we didn't not receive state aid on the anticipated cost of transportation for April, May, and June. And that negative $22,170,000 is a result of a loss of state aid for transportation not provided. So when we talked about all of those aid categories being kind of scooped into the services category, from the 1920 school year to the 2021 school year, we saw things like BOSI's aid, hardware and technology, software library, textbooks, high tax aid, and supplemental excess cost aid lumped into foundation aid. And the proposed budget, the state budget, has all of these other costs lumped into this category now called services aid. So just as a visual, if you look at the 1920 list, and then you look at the 2122 list, you can see what's happening at the state level, which is instead of having all of these individual service aids that allows you to know what your costs are and anticipate what your revenue is, the governor is proposing to lump all these into one, which means that if there is a cut to the, what is now called the services aid category, not only do you lose the money, but you lose the ability to prepare for and project for your revenue in future years. So again, you know, what's beneath the iceberg? I am not going to go into detail about this, this accounting. But suffice it to say that we talked about the shell game on 34th Street by Penn Station. What you're looking at, when you look at the review of the state aid run, is a creative use of accounting rules to make it look like Baldwin is receiving additional aid when in fact Baldwin is seeing a cut in state aid. So what Dr. Robinson likes to talk about is the above the line, below the line. I am not going to go into that in detail, but I am going to show you the progression. So where this pandemic adjustment, you see what, what the, the red arrow is circling to, where the governor likes to refer to the pandemic adjustment, this $511,000 that is money spent that we are supposed to receive back in COVID, you know, related expense payment. When that number is above the line, you see the subtotal of aid is $31,400,000. Last year, it translates into an additional $300,000 when this 511 is kept above the line. You see down here, the state subtotal is a decrease of $4.5 million. That's the, that is the, the most significant number here because that is what will ultimately be the new GEA. If the state goes ahead and plugs that, that hole this year, going into next year in the 2122 budget, because the federal government is giving the state the money to plug that hole, the question becomes in the 2223 school year, where is that money coming from? If the state does not make that money up through a state budget, the federal government surely is not giving this money multiple years in a row. That is the cliff, right? That is what's below the surface. And I know Mary Jo has been to multiple presentations where they're talking about the cliff, the financial cliff. The financial cliff won't be felt in the 2122 school year. It'll be felt in the 2223 school year when the federal government is not plugging up the holes in the, in the budget. And the last is down here at the bottom, the $689,000 right now is what Baldwin stands to lose in the current run of state aid. And so when you progress that to the next slide and you take that $511,000 and you move it below the line, you can see here where the, where in the previous slide, there was a positive number here, there is now a negative number in this circled yellow highlighted area. And then finally, when you get to the end, when you have this federal cares restoration, when you take that 511 and you put it down here at the bottom, what you see here is where the loss actually is. So you see this $4.5 million loss, this, this $689,000 loss. And again, it's this $4.5 million loss that the federal government is promising to fill next year, but it's still this $689,000 loss that Baldwin is facing going forward. So that's $689,000 loss, which is what you saw in Newsday. That's the loss in state aid. That's the, you know, the headline of schools getting a 7% increase in state aid. The 7% increase in state aid translates for Baldwin into a $689,000 loss. Remember that chart that I showed you where Long Island was being shortchanged state aid across the state? And this is an example, Baldwin is an example of that. And then the transportation aid reduction, which is forecasted to be in the neighborhood of $1.2 million of loss. So the challenges that we face going forward with the budget as presented and is that our budget expenses are, are $142,453,000. That is what allows us to maintain the program we currently have. And the revenue that we are projected to receive, whether it is through the tax levy or expense driven aid or state aid is $137 million. So they do not equal where we are right now. And that's the reason why we're not doing line by line, because having the conversation about, you know, individual function codes and individual lines is meaningless until we have a finalized budget from the state. So we await the numbers from the state. Getting past that though, you know, even in this current budget as presented, Baldwin is still of the lower amounts. We project spending about $27,000 per student compared to Nassau County, which is in excess of $30,000. This is based on the 1920 expenditures and the highest district in Nassau County, which in that school year was Locust Valley, spending $42,000 per student. When we look at capital costs, we're looking at two major components in the, the capital projects in this budget. One is window replacements at Plaza School, which will cost us in the neighborhood of $1.3 million. You all know Plaza is an absolutely beautiful school with majestic windows. Those windows have seen their day. Some of them are dangerous and can't be opened. And so replacing windows at Plaza is, is a necessity. And the other area that we're looking at is the cost to identify what our HVAC and mechanical problems and repairs at the high school and middle school will be. Our buildings are not young. You know, I, I shared with Dr. Robinson, you probably all saw that there is a proposal out there to completely redo the Port Authority terminal in, in Manhattan. And it's at a cost of billions of dollars. For me, the interesting fact there is that Grand Central was, not Grand Central, the Port Authority was built in 1950. Our buildings are a lot older than the Port Authority. And so if the Port Authority needs to be knocked down and completely rebuilt, you know, we continue to maintain our buildings that are much older structures. But our high school and middle school HVAC systems, and I want to be very clear, this HVAC has absolutely nothing to do with airflow and COVID. It has nothing to do with that. Our high school has different wings. We have different systems in those wings. We have hot water systems and steam systems. And the balance of the heating in the high school has been an issue for many, many years. And I have charged the business office and the facilities office to A, evaluate the problem. And that's what is in here is just evaluating the problem and then fixing the problem. And so when we look at capital projects in this budget, those are the two major projects. Remember that in years past, what was in there was an elevator for steel and an elevator for Plaza. And so these are the projects that we are proposing for the 2122 school year. So with all that, Baldwin's property tax cap for the 2122 school year will be 1.74%. If the budget is defeated twice, that means the tax levy goes to 0%, which means we would have to cut 1.7 million dollars so that our proposed budget is a 0% budget increase, budget to budget. So I close with what is, I think, the real story behind where we are right now. And that is that true transparency, which we pride ourselves in being with our community. True transparency, sometimes it's what you don't see that really matters the most. And so tonight's presentation is more about what you don't see than anything else. And just, you know, again, a reminder that our budget is really all about our kids and supporting the academic and extracurricular programs for our kids, kindergarten through grade 12. So with that, I will take questions. Mrs. O'Hagan, I turn it over to you.
Okay. Anyone want to jump in? Go ahead, Annie.
Yes, my questions were more comparables. Is it possible you can tell me what the tax levy was for last year? I apologize, I was trying to find my binder, but I'm still in boxes a little bit, so I couldn't find that information.
So tell me again what your, what the question.
So it was on page 17 for last year. The tax levy for this 21, 2021, 2022 budget is the 99.
So it would be 1.7 million dollars less, right, Dr. Robinson?
Yeah, last year or the year that we're in now was 98,286,817.
That's that delta of 1.7 million. Should the, should the, the, the difference in tax levy is what gets you to that 0% in the event the budget does not pass? So it's 1.707, I think.
That's correct, yeah.
Does that answer your question, Mrs. Dreska? Unmute yourself.
Did we lose her?
Oh, sorry, I was muted. No, you answered both the questions I had in mind. Thank you.
I think Mr. Smith had his hand raised.
I was just curious, I know we had the big bump for item line 2630, the computer assisted instruction, because we've gone remote. And I was just curious, is that a, oh, just this year a big bump? Or are we now using some kind of software that's got, you know, annual license fees? And will we be up at that higher number going forward?
Yeah, so, so there's a couple of things driving that. One is that yes, for sure, we have, we have invested in software that is exceptional to our, our instructional program. Let's remember that, that while we are planning for next school year, you know, we have been working on that now for a couple of months. We don't know what next year is going to look like yet. And so we have, we are utilizing software that I think is exceptional and that we want to be able to continue to use. And we also increased our internet capability, because now we have students grades four through 12 with Chromebooks. And so the fact that we have so much more technology being used individually requires that we improve our, our access to the internet, our bandwidth.
If I could just make a couple of comments, just to elaborate a little bit on, on what you said, Dr. Cami. I, I would be remiss if I didn't point out that the cost for special education, which is a substantial portion of our budget and constantly rising, is something that the federal government committed to sharing with us when it passed the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act many years ago. And they have every year reneged on the commitment that they made to share that with local districts. They have never shared it at the rate that was originally promised. And I bring it up because every person on Long Island would say taxes on Long Island are too high. And I just would like to make the point that I do not believe that they are too high. Because of expenses, they are too high because we do not get the help, both from the federal government and the state government, to which we are entitled. If we got the level of funding for special education costs, as a, for instance, from the federal government, you would not see the level of taxes that we are, are paying here. So I think, you know, this is such a complicated subject. And sometimes, you know, everyone just gets lost in the numbers. But this is supposed to be, education is supposed to be a joint effort between the residents, the state, and to a certain extent, the federal government. And we are continuing to carry far more of the burden than was ever intended and should be. And I, I say this because I belong to other organizations and we are discussing advocacy efforts. And this is one of the things that we will be emphasizing in our advocacy efforts. In addition to the, the new pandemic adjustment, which is the GEA point 2.0, that was something that we put up with from 2010-ish to about 2016. And pardon me if I'm oversimplifying, but it was basically, we know, the state saying, we know what we owe you. But oops, we don't have it, so we're just not giving you X percent. And that carried on for more than five years before the amount came back up to what the state felt that it owed us. In the meantime, that difference that we filled in for those five years was never, never given back to us. So we carried that loss forward. And these are some of the things that make explaining costs to the public so difficult. So that's my, my rant for the moment, but I just wanted to add that to what you said. Thank you for indulging me.
I think you raised a good point, Ms. O'Hagan. I was going to ask, you said with these groups, as you talk about the burden that's been existing for the past few years with Long Island carrying so much of this burden, have they talked about whether it's on the special ed perspective, like what are some action items? I mean, we've done the advocacy with letters, but is there anything else that can happen to really make the change that needs to happen? This has been going on for a few years. What can, what can be done? Because I agree with everything that you just said.
Well, as far as New York State is concerned, we now have a group of, especially in Nassau County, of newly elected legislators. And I think our obligation at this point is to educate them. Because I think there are, are elected who, who don't have a true understanding of education funding. And so going forward, I know that's one of the things that I will be doing and the associations I belong to will be reaching out to the newly elected legislators and trying to explain to them and help them to understand what the problems are here on Long Island and the fact that we do not receive our fair share of state funding. You know, I don't want to get into the weeds too much, but I think my colleagues are aware of what is called shares, which is a proportion of state spending that comes to different parts of the state. And for years, for as long as I can remember, the amount of funding that comes to Long Island relative to the amount of taxes that we send to the state is way out of whack. And we, that's one of our consistent advocacy points is that we need to see a fair share, which once again would affect the amount of taxes that our local homeowners pay.
You know, one of the things that I would add there is that we have heard for the last year and a quarter that, or even probably most recently, that New York as a state gives to the federal government a disproportionate amount of money and probably one of, one of the highest tax states in the country, right? And so we give all of this money and we've heard our governor say, we do not get our fair share back. New York gives all this money federally and we do not get the fair share back. It is exactly the same argument. Long Island gives all of this money, they do not get their fair share back. For those people that are in the community tonight that are listening, I want it to, to be very clear of two things. One is there is no shortage of making that point on behalf of the board and, and school superintendents. We have said this over and over and over again. And the result that we've gotten is a state budget that once again, not only puts the burden on the taxpayer, but, but shorts Long Island. The other thing that I feel compelled to say, and you can probably hear the passion in my voice starting to come out, is that, you know, when I listen to the news or I listen, or I read the papers, this is what I hear. We need to get our schools open, we need to get our schools open, we need to get our schools open. I am telling you that Long Island opened their schools. We have kids that have been in school since September 1st. We have kids that have been in school every single day since September 1st. Long Island did what Long Island needed to do to open schools. And so the, 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 the gift of that is a shortfall from New York State to Long Island. Honestly, every single person on Long Island should be outraged. And that outrage should not be directed at their schools. It shouldn't be directed at their superintendents or their boards. That outrage should be directed directly to the governor's office because once again, we seem to be on the short end of the receiving end of state aid. I mean, sorry.
And I guess to further amplify Mrs. O'Hagan's point, as you stated in the presentation, that not only does the federal government is, hasn't been doing their fair share, but now we're going to have to incur the costs of full cost of the residential, not get that reimbursed. So again, yet, and, and again, students who have special needs are entitled to receive the education that they require. If they are required to be in a residential facility, then that's where, and we have no qualms about doing that. However, it shouldn't be that it rests on solely on the school districts and the taxpayers to, to take care of that.
Okay, great. You're right, you're right. You're right.
So now the governments, the federal governments bailing on us and the state governments bailing on us, so hello.
And yet I still want to point out that what's being presented to you in this budget is a budget that as it stands now, um, does not cut. Um, but again, you know, we, we, we are not in a position to say we are cutting, we are adding. It's a budget right now that hopes to maintain. Um, but until we see what the final numbers are from New York State, um, everything is in limbo. Um, so instead of going through all of these individual codes, until we have a finalized, um, state budget, um, there's little that we can do. Um, we certainly have a plan. Um, it's, I don't want you to think that is without thought. Um, we have given a lot of thought to, so what happens if? Um, this team that you're looking at is a team that's exceptional, um, at critical thinking and problem solving. We do the what ifs all of the time. And so, um, you know, we, we have given that a lot of thought. Um, we hope not to have to implement many of those thoughts. Um, we really do hope that our communities and our state senators and our assembly people and, you know, are going to come out and say, seriously, enough is enough. You know, we, we, we know that we're all hurting, um, but can we hurt equally? And not really, you know, take this out on, you know, the same people that we sort of keep taking it out on.
Yep, it's not sustainable, definitely not sustainable.
So this is just the first, you know, eh, in a series of budget presentations. Um, you know, we hope to, um, can, you know, get more information. Um, it is possible that, um, the board, and I've shared this with you, um, depending upon the timeline at the state level, which is dependent upon the federal level. Um, you know, we, we right now have a timeline, um, that is our normal timeline. We may have to delay the, um, the adoption of the budget. Um, if the, um, if that, if, if, eh, you know, the people that we are depending upon, um, you know, don't move as quickly as we would like them to move.
And Dr. Kami, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is just for clarification purposes. This is the governor's proposal.
Correct.
This is not the final number. Uh, traditionally, uh, there has been input from the legislature, uh, before the final budget is adopted. Um, our experience in the last few years under this particular governor is that he has had a lot of, of sway, uh, in terms of, you know, forming the, the eventual budget. So I'm not so sure how different it will be, but I do want to make it clear that at this point at least it's a proposal, it is not a firm, it is not the firm budget.
Correct.
Anyone else, any other questions or comments or?
Right, so you, we have five minutes before the next, uh, regular, um, meeting starts. So, uh, my suggestion would be to adjourn and then shut off your cameras and then come back at eight o'clock.
Okay.
And so do you want to adjourn out of this?
Well, do we have to do that?
Two separate meetings, I think.
Okay. Okay.
Although this is a Kami's shaking her head, no, no.
Yeah, cause we went from executive session to public session and that's this.
That's fine, but you can still do the break, that's fine.
So in other words, we can just turn our cameras off and mute ourselves for five minutes.
Some people that maybe just want to be here for the budget meeting and not for the, I'm sorry, the regular meeting and at the budget meeting might tune in at eight o'clock. Right, so shut your monitors and mute, and then we'll come back in five minutes.
Okay.
Right. Mrs. Reed, make sure you mute your, uh, mind.
Are we ready to start, Dr. Kami?
Yep, I think we can start.
Okay. Yeah. Uh, for anyone in the community who may be joining us right now, we just concluded our first, uh, work session, uh, on the budget. And now we are going to, uh, to, uh, have our regular business meeting. And I just wanted to remind you that, uh, we do not take live questions. Uh, so if you have questions either from the budget presentation or on the business meeting, uh, we ask that you either try to get them to us in advance, or if you have questions, you can certainly reach out tomorrow to the district office and, and we'll try to answer your questions when we get them. Thank you. All right. Board of Education accepts the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held on January 5th and January 13th, 2021, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mrs. Dereska. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. The Board of Education acknowledges retreat receipt of the Treasurer's Report for the month of December 2020, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed. Seconded by Mrs. Dereska. Are there any questions? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. And now I'd like to turn the meeting over to the superintendent.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Ohagen. Um, before I turn it over to, uh, Mr. Maniella, who will be doing a presentation tonight, I just want to say a few things. I want to congratulate, uh, congratulate, congratulate Brookside School, um, for attaining honorable mention in, um, the character.org. Um, they are, um, now our third school, uh, fourth school to, um, reach, you know, that level and some beyond. Um, so that really tells us there's a bunch of characters in Brookside, don't get it. Um, but it is a, it's a lovely achievement, um, on the part of Brookside and we're really proud of them. Um, I want to just also, uh, uh, share, um, with the community that, um, even in, uh, where we have found ourselves um, in this kind of craziness, um, we now have Chromebooks, um, in the hands of every single fourth through 12th grader in our school community. Um, and in every K to three classroom, there are at least three Chromebooks. I'm sorry, three, there's at least 15 Chromebooks, um, in every classroom. So, um, in a very short while, we have, um, really, um, done a lot. Um, I want to, um, um, say, uh, a big thank you to our business office. Um, they have put together, um, a budget under exceptionally challenging times, um, with a lot of new staff, I might add. And, um, you know, it, eh, if you've ever tried flying blind, um, that in, uh, in a large essence is what doing this business, this budget was like this year. But, um, they are exceptional, they are exceptional department. Um, and I want to thank, um, specifically Dr. Robinson and Mrs. Walsh for their efforts, um, in putting that, uh, together.
Amen. Amen.
Um, the other, um, last couple of things, um, that I just want to share with the community before I turn it over. Um, and I, I, um, by no means, um, I, I save this for last intentionally. Um, you know, we are looking forward to spring. Um, we have been looking toward the next school year and having a lot of what-if conversations as we think about, um, the 21, 22 school year. Um, and we are really looking forward to, um, getting out of three feet of snow and cold weather and bringing back, um, you know, uh, the flowers and everything else. Uh, but I want to remind the community that, um, we are in the midst of a pandemic. Um, there are lapses of memory, I think, at times, because I think, um, to a certain extent, we have almost gotten used to this environment. Long Island has the highest rate of infection of any county, of any counties in all of New York State. Um, and I just think that it is a sobering reminder, um, that we are not out of the woods. Um, that there is definitely, you know, hope going forward. Um, but, um, please, um, continue to be vil- vil- uh, diligent, vigilant, um, in, um, in your efforts at, um, wearing your masks and staying socially, uh, physically apart. Um, being really smart as this Baldwin community has been through this whole thing. Um, I want to thank also the Baldwin community. Um, you know, being active on the national level, I hear about, um, things that are going on in other communities, um, that are, um, terrifying. Um, and that in the midst of a very, very difficult situation, um, there are other places, um, in the state and there's other places in the country, um, whose communities have not, um, stood by their school district. They have not stood by each other. Um, and this Baldwin community has been nothing short of outstanding. Um, and so it is, um, eh, you know, I take this opportunity to say thank you, um, to remind you that we are still in this. Um, we are not out of it, um, and, um, you know, to just, um, you know, stay strong going forward. You know, there is a light at the end of the tunnel. Um, I wish it was closer, but at least it's there. Um, and so, you know, a, a really a very, um, warm thank you to, um, our community for being, um, kind and generous and understanding, um, and neighborly during what is a very, very difficult, um, time. Um, so having said that, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Maniella, who is going to present on our Family and Consumer Science Program. One of the things I want you to take away from this presentation is that in the midst of all this, we continue to improve, um, on our curriculum. We continue to be innovative in what we do. We continue to, um, keep students and, um, instruction, um, at the core of, uh, what we do every day. So, Mr. Maniella, the screen is all yours. And you are muted.
Thank you so much, Dr. Kami. Just give me one moment as I, uh, share my screen. Okay, hopefully everyone can see the screen.
Yeah.
Wonderful. So I thank you, Dr. Kami, good evening, Board of Education. Uh, good evening, community, parents and, uh, faculty members in attendance today. Tonight, I will, uh, take you on an overview of our Family and Consumer Science Program. So our Family and Consumer Science Program begins in our middle school. Sixth grade students take a Home and Careers course. Uh, this course is predominantly, uh, designed to build foundational skills and introduce students to various units of study, um, in the Family and Consumer Science curriculum. Um, as the students move on to high school, they are immersed with, uh, various different courses that they could take. Um, the courses range from introductory level courses to advanced courses. For instance, you'll see in the screen before you, students could take, um, a basic culinary arts course to college-level advanced culinary arts. Um, they could take a basic fashion course to more advanced clothing construction. Um, and in addition, the Family and Consumer Science Department in high school is home to our education academy. So you'll see here several different courses that are college-level courses, um, focusing on, uh, our topics in, in education. So it's still a little deeper dive into the middle school, uh, curriculum this year. Teachers have done a wonderful job in terms of modifying the curriculum. So this way learners from home can participate. Um, some of the units of study that they are focusing on this year is a restaurant project. And you'll see the, um, slide that keeps changing, that GIF, uh, shows you one of the projects that was produced by one of our students. Um, and this project learners will study and complete a comprehensive project, um, regarding consumerism and they'll create advertisements, um, showing nutritional values of different foods. They also will undergo a, uh, career exploration unit, um, and a hand sewing unit where they learn the basic stitching techniques, the hand sewing. Uh, the picture on the bottom over here, uh, these are student-designed, um, pillows that they stitch together on their own. So it's very nice products to see, um, that our sixth grade students are completing. What's nice about the middle school program is there's an infusion of, uh, cross-curriculum subjects such as English language arts, mathematics, science, you know, we talked about cooking, sewing, fabric, um, pricing everything out, we need to include all these other, um, areas. In the high school, we start to group the different courses by cluster. Um, so one cluster is our food and nutrition cluster. Here, students could take the various culinary arts courses, again, from the introductory course to the more advanced course. Uh, the advanced course does, uh, end in the ability for students to earn, uh, college credit through Nassau Community College. We used to use Suffolk, uh, but recently Nassau added that opportunity back for dual enrollment. So we, uh, switched over to work with our, uh, Nassau Community College. And then, uh, learners can also take various other courses which are cycled on an alternating cycle, such as nutrition, health and fitness, food and culture, baking, uh, such as nutrition, health and fitness, food and culture, baking, or restaurant management. Those are cycled through on a different, every three years, if I remember correctly, cycle. So here is a piece of student work. Again, its teachers were, have been very creative trying to find a way to engage our learners at home as well as our learners in the classroom. So they're using different structural technology applications to produce videos to show, you know, their progress through the course and creation of work. So this young lady had to bake biscuits and show, you know, everyone how she did that. So let's take a look.
Okay, so here are the items you're gonna need today. We need a scalpel. Then we're gonna get some cold butter, some lemon juice, some sugar. Then we have salt and baking powder. Here I am just mixing all my dry ingredients together, mixing it well with milk and butter. And printing sheet and cutting the biscuits in shapes. Hands off my face. Cleaning up and doing the dishes, cleaning counters, all stuff.
Finished product looks pretty good. I wouldn't mind taking a bite of this here right now. So you see how creative this young lady was during the time lapse. So, you know, bringing in different instructional technology applications to showcase her work. This next is from a nutrition course, a nutrition, health and fitness. In this particular class, the students were studying proteins of being a vegetarian or a carnivore. And this student created a unique rap to showcase why he's a vegetarian and why he believes in being a vegetarian. So a little disclosure, a little warning. If you are a carnivore, you might not like this particular rap, but I think it's very creative and showcases this young man's talents. So we'll listen to the whole thing. Sorry. It's about a minute fifty again, but it's fantastic.
Food is what a cow said. People killing all kinds of cows every day for food. Killing them for food. Is fries, cheese, hamburger really that good? But we need to eat. Let me educate you. Take a seat. Let me show you how it goes. Follow me. A vegetarian is what you need to be. I get it. Yeah, the food tastes great, but it goes through hell to get made. A baby cow can never be safe. They all finna be gone one day. But it's fine, right? The cows are all right. They're gonna take it. In the middle of the night, getting chopped up. What a horrific sight. Then you see them on a plate on date night. The baby's getting killed just so you can get him there. I'm gonna tell you how I feel. I'm gonna tell you what's the deal. I'm gonna tell you how I feel. I'm gonna tell you what's the problem. I'm gonna tell you how you're killing them. Cooking cows in the kitchen. Yeah, in the kitchen. Yeah, that's what I gotta do. I gotta tell you the truth. Killing the innocent for food. The innocent for food, yeah, we killing the innocent. Killing the innocent.
So once again, very creative, very talented young man, original lyrics. I just loved it. So.
Maniella, I just want to take a poll of the board. How many of you will now consider, you know, at least being vegetarian or considering that option?
Oh gosh, that was a tough one.
Because I'm right there with him. You know, it happened to me.
Mission accomplished. So our next design, our next cluster is our design cluster, which focuses on fashion design. Once again, starts with a basic fashion course and students could progress towards a detailed garment assembly course, advanced clothing design course, and also interior design. Once again, some of these courses do alternate. They're not necessarily offered every single year. They do alternate on a sequence. So as I take you through some examples, here's an interior design course this year. Students were fabricating new covers for stools, some old stools that were around in the high school. While the students in person completed the actual fabrication, students that were learning remotely did more of a detailed mathematical analysis regarding cost. Is it better or cheaper to buy a new stool or to refurbish something already existent? So they were doing a piece at home to complement the work that was going on in the classroom. Here's our fashion course sewing where students were making their own shorts. So this is the finished product that this young lady was, was working on. Looks like something you would buy, you know, right out of the store, go to Macy's. I can't tell the difference. So came out fantastic. While students are working on the sewing, other students potentially that were working at home remotely had a complete different studies, different projects. Here's an example of one student's project on fashion to showcase careers in fashion, just different pieces of work. Another cluster is the Human Development Cluster, which has a couple of our Education Academy courses embedded within it. From Contemporary Topics in Education, which is new this year, Introduction to Teaching, and a new course for next year is our College Level Foundations Course, which will be a dual enrollment course with Malloy College. So I just wanted to reiterate that this particular department fax is home to our Education Academy. And firm belief that the academy is providing an opportunity for internships and shadow days as well as competitions. So one of the things we did this year is create opportunities for some of our students to go over to Brookside and work with students at Brookside. So here's some of our students from the high school going over to Brookside. They also worked with Steel, but they did that one virtually. So the students got a chance to see what it's like to work in person with students as well as virtually to encounter, you know, walk in the shoes of a teacher right now. This is some more pictures of our student teachers from the high school, working with students at Brookside during lunch. We specifically chose outside during lunch just for social distancing purposes and for the COVID restrictions. All right, in conclusion, what we did this year, because right now the high school students are selecting courses for next year. Believe it or not, they're already picking their courses. And because we have about a third of the high school learning remotely, we wanted to make sure that they could hear about all the elective courses that they could take. So each department did create an elective presentation for students at home so they could learn about potential electives for next year. So this particular video, I'm not gonna show the thing. I just want to show you a piece. Each teacher spoke about different courses in the department. And then this was.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Prager. I am one of the teachers in the Family and Consumer Science Department, and I teach many of the Culinary Arts classes. Next year, in the Culinary Department, we are going to be offering three different classes. The basic level class is Culinary Arts, where students are taught the basic skills of food preparation. When students complete the class, they'll have a thorough knowledge of how to prepare certain dishes based on various food groups as well as being able to do these things on their own. Once students take Culinary Arts, which is the basic level and pass that class, they can go on to take Advanced Culinary Arts, which is a course that we offer where the recipes are much more advanced. Students are expected to be able to work on their own. And the techniques that they learn, including knife skills, are more advanced than what is taught in a culinary arts class. This course also is being offered for.
Seeing this particular video, they were working under a Master Chef. This is one of the learning experiences the students left high school to work with a Master Chef at that kitchen.
And just to be clear that I shot this year. Probably noticed that was, that was done last, the beginning of last year.
Correct. So I just want to thank the teachers for sharing the content, being creative. Delective areas, sometimes difficult to find a way to engage our remote learners because it often involves hands-on experiences. But our teachers are managing to do that by being creative. And that concludes our presentation.
Does anyone have any questions? Or Mr. Maniella?
This was really, really helpful. It was good. I think my daughter needs to take that class just to know how to wash dishes after she bakes. That was a great part of the presentation.
Impressed me the most.
That part, the cleaning.
I just wanted to say we, that was a terrific presentation and, and we had a little, the board members had a bit of a preview. And when I, I saw some of the material, I, I made a note for myself just saying, this isn't your mother's home ec. And it truly is not. The focus on careers and is such a more obviously up-to-date and modern take on what used to be considered domestic chores and domestic skills, I should say. So I'm really impressed. It's, it put these skills in a whole new light. And I'm, I'm really glad because I think there's lots of potential careers in those fields.
It was nice to see, you hear so often people comment, you know, you, everybody teaches so many things in high school, but they don't teach the basics. These kids don't know how to balance checkbooks, you know, or do any of these basic things. And it was nice to specifically see that in one of the slides. So obviously we are doing that. And that's, that's fantastic. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Mr. Maniella. That was terrific.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. We'll go on with then the next thing, which is comments from the Board of Education, any reports that anyone may have from meetings or whatever that they might have attended. Does anyone have anything to bring up? This is Coles.
Okay, so I will start with two quick reports from the civic organization and the chamber to which I am the liaison of both. The Civic Club, they're still in talks with the developers to keep things on track. But other than that, you know, it's a quiet time. Nothing much is going on. Their next meeting is next Thursday at 7:30. And anybody who's interested in watching that, of course, virtually, all you have to do is email baldwincivic@gmail or you can go on to their Facebook page and get that link. The Chamber of Commerce also pretty quiet, but they are launching a new program to honor your vet and it's a banner that you can purchase for $200. And it's going to be one of the, the large flags that they put on all the poles throughout town. You know, like you, you see them in other towns for the chambers and, and for holidays. So these flags will have the picture of your person as well as their name and any, you know, small synopsis of information that you would like to have on there. And these will fly from Memorial Day to Veterans Day all throughout the town. So anybody interested in doing that, you know, you can go to the Chamber's Facebook page or email them as well. And then my only other report is this week I attended the Nassau Suffolk School Board Association meeting where they were speaking about so many of the things that were talked about tonight as far as the budget and aid and Long Island not having our share and just how detrimental this, this was already, but is so much worse now. And you're very informative. And I, you know, I mean, you just can't emphasize enough that people need to really reach out to their politicians and let them know that it's unacceptable. And that's all I have.
Thank you. What else? I too, I attended two things. One was the refit meeting. Where, and it was pretty much the same conversation everywhere, which was about the budget, the numbers that were proposed and what they mean for individual districts. And like Mrs. Coles, I attended the Legislative Conference. And I just want to comment that it is a joint effort of the Nassau Suffolk School Boards Association, the Nassau Superintendent's Association and the Suffolk Superintendent's Association. And I say that because it's important to understand and to know that all of us in the education community are pretty much on the same page. We're all looking for the same kinds of things. We're all advocating for the same kinds of things from the state. And most of the things that were covered, as Mrs. Coles said, and as we discussed in our discussion of our own budget, were about state aid and the things that we are going to, to see in the way of reductions. And I won't reiterate all of that. But in addition, other highlights for advocacy are the flexibility, we are advocating for flexibility in the use of our fund balance and reserves, which right now are very highly regulated. And we are also looking, as we always do, to demand mandate relief with a specific focus on special ed and ELL. I want to clarify that these are programs and services that we support 100%. It really is about having some flexibility in the way in which those things are delivered. Sometimes these state regulations, while they may mean well, make the delivery of those services awkward and more expensive than they need to be. So we are advocating for some flexibility in that. All right, if no one has anything else to add, Mr. Smith?
I was just gonna say, yeah, I went to the Nassau Suffolk School Board meeting too. That was very informative, very well done. Great people all across the island to listen to. But I'd also like to thank, well, I also attended, let me back up. I am Baldwin's representative at, on the BOSI's Budget Review Committee, which is, you think this budget's big? Oh my God. It's a little overwhelming. I'd really like to thank Dr. Robinson for the time he took, helping me walk through that a little bit and understand that better. And it's, it's amazing the multitude of services that BOSI's can offer to districts across the island and across Nassau. And it, you know, we take advantage of a lot of them. But you really have to take a look and see, you know, how, how does it work and is it going to be beneficial to us? So try to ask some questions and try to listen and, and learn. But that's what I spent a few weeknights on in the last month. So it's interesting.
Yeah. I won't even say anything, but thank you for doing that. Okay. All right, we'll continue with the business. The Personnel Actions Report, Board of Education approves the Personnel Actions Report as amended, dated February 3rd, 2021, as detailed in the Friday mailing. Moved by Mrs. Dreska.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Smith. Because this involves the names of individual staff members, we do not discuss it in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The Board of Education approves the recommendations for services of the Committee on Special Education, sub-CE504 Committee and Committee on Preschool Special Education for Services in November and December 2020 and January 2021 as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mrs. Reed. This involves the names of individual children, so we do not discuss it in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Board of Education approves the Home Tutoring and Special Education Service Reports as. Board of Education approves the Home Tutoring and Special Education Service Reports as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mrs. Reed. Again, this involves the names of individual children, so we do not discuss it in public. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay, as Board President, I am calling for consideration of a consent agenda for business items one through twelve. Are there any items that members would care to withdraw from consideration under the consent agenda or further discussion and a separate vote? Mrs. Reed?
Um could we please remove item number one from the consent agenda and do two through twelve?
Certainly. All right, um okay, may I have a motion to approve the cons- having a consent agenda that includes business items two through twelve?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mrs. Dreska. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right, could I then have a motion to approve business items two through twelve?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Dreska, seconded by Mrs. Reed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right, business item number one, Board of Education accepts with thanks the donation of one hundred and fifty dollars from Dell Randolph and his wife Maria Davino to set up the Randolph Family Scholarship. The Randolph family would like to award a scholarship in the amount of one hundred and fifty dollars to a graduating senior each year for the next ten years, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed, seconded by Mr. Smith. Are there any comments or questions?
Thank you, Dell and Maria.
Thank you.
They're a great family.
All those in favor?
Great kids.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, the Board of Education has a second read and adopts the following policy as detailed in the Friday mailing. It's policy eight one three zero, school safety plans and teams. May I have a motion, please? Moved by Mrs. Reed, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, does anyone have anything under other before I read upcoming dates? Okay, not seeing anything. Um couple of upcoming dates, uh let's see. Midwinter recess uh will be from Monday, February fifteen through Friday, February nineteen. All the schools will be closed. Uh our next budget work session will be held on Wednesday, February twenty-fourth at seven o'clock. It will be virtual. And the third budget work session will be Wednesday, February twenty-fourth at seven thirty. So they will be on the, just to make mention that they will be on the same night. Our next regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting will be on Wednesday, March tenth at eight P M. All right, then if there's no other business, uh may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Mrs. Reed?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mrs. Dreska. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night. Thank you.